I'm going to call to order our agenda meeting on August 16th. Our invocation today will be Commissioner Antonio Williams, Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Chris Gurley. We'll have the, we'll need approval of the minutes of July the 19th and August the 2nd. Adjustments of the agenda?
Uh, we don't have any at this moment.
There were a few things. We have had some discussion regards to diversity in our policy. And I do want to add to the agenda the fact that I want to name a diversity working group. So do we need, where do we need to add that on new business?
Under new business.
Diversity policy.
That's right, diversity policy. So item five will be diversity working group. Let's see what else we got here. Also, we want to have some conversation in regards to our legislative goals for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. That is due on September the 12th. And in that we are canceling our meeting of September the 6th, we would need to have that discussion today. So if we could, under new business, under six, discussion on legislative goals.
This pen ain't working. Don't you look at that.
For the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And one other thing, that is yesterday, the state of emergency for the state of North Carolina had expired. And with that, there are some changes in our ability to have remote meetings. So I am wanting to have our clerk bring us up to date in regards to what those changes So clerk reports. On changes required.
Number six again.
For.
Discussion of legislative goals.
Ending of state of emergency.
That number seven.
Yes.
This is simply a letter that you can read. It doesn't really have to go on the agenda.
Okay, I think I am through with items. Anything else, if anything else we have? All right, then we're going to go to unfinished business. Motion to approve authorizing Mosley Architects to proceed to full construction documents. And who will be presenting that? Oh, there he is. I didn't see you over there.
Have they got the, the turnouts and all that stuff?
I haven't heard back yet. I just emailed them last night. We're talking about some other things.
So don't we need to have all that set before we start? Because if you do, you're going to start getting change order issues.
Well, um.
I can ask him between now and nine o'clock if you want.
Please do.
Call him. Yeah, okay.
Number two, motion to recommend approval of test order number two. Mr. Crumpler.
That's with CDM Smith for Commissioning Agent Services for the Detention Center. Expansion project as recommended by Facilities Committee. I'll be presenting that as well.
Appointments committee? Do we have anything from the appointments committee?
Yes, we do. We have one appointment for a lot of it.
Okay. And then consent agenda.
One budget amendment.
All right. First budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office. A total of $6,568.8 appropriating insurance proceeds to repairs and maintenance for vehicles. Your next budget amendment is for the Health Department appropriating $25,178 for COVID-19 enhancing detection activities. I believe this is additional monies they had left over from last year, and they are appropriating it for professional services. You have a budget amendment for the 2122 Debt Project Fund. This is to appropriate funds for engineering services with CDM Smith. That was just discussed under unfinished business number two. This is the budget amendment that goes along with that and includes both the contract for commissioning, for engineering services and blackout testing. This will be reimbursed from debt proceeds as well. You have a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Office totaling $5,000. This is to anticipate and appropriate donations received. Your next budget amendment is also for the Sheriff's Office anticipating $100 of donations You have a budget amendment for the Debt Service Reserve Fund totaling $5,721,187. These are monies that you all budgeted in the 2223 budget for debt service and will be set aside in a separate fund within the general fund.
I don't know how you took that and doubled it.
Governmental accounting. You have a budget amendment for the Comprehensive Opioid Program within the Detention Center. This is also known as the COSAP grant. This is to appropriate funds. I think this is part of the third year of this grant, $288,781.28. And I believe you have a breakdown of what is included in those grant expenditures within those individual accounts. You have a budget amendment for the Library totaling $93,397. This is for the Annual Raising a Reader Grant. This is under the Smart Start Program. And you can see the various line items that is being appropriated, including travel, training, salaries, and supplies.
Hey, back, back up to that, back, back down one or two.
The, um, the Detention Center?
Yeah, I'm talking to Carol, yeah.
Okay.
One more. Okay, never mind. I saw, I saw something twice. I was just asking. You did.
Oh, okay.
I see what it is now.
Okay. So we got through the library. So now we have one for DSS. This is to reallocate $10,000 within the direct service allocation line item. This is just to move it to a specific line item for the Links program and to enable them to track it individually. Your next budget amendment and the final budget amendment is for Soil and Water. This is to anticipate $105,700 of grant funds received from the Department of Agriculture. This is for the Ednastansel Farm, Farmland Preservation Grant. These are pretty much pass-through funds. The activity is managed by our county office, but it is funded through the state. And that's all I have for you.
That's all?
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Crumpler.
Uh, number two is motion to approve the sale of surplus property at 1,005 Ivy Street, Goldsboro, North Carolina jointly owned by the City of Goldsboro as recommended by the City of Goldsboro. I think maybe Andrew got a little bit of information on it, maybe.
Good morning. This was a property that was sent over by the City of Goldsboro. It was approved at a recent meeting. If you scroll down, you can see some of the information on it, including what the offer was and the locations. At 300 Tanya Drive, it's a previous tax foreclosure. We did, at the pre-agenda meeting, we were asked to reach out as to whether adjoining property owners were notified. The explanation we received from the city is that they proceeded under 168-269, which is the General Statute for Upset Bids, and they didn't proceed under the Session Law, the 2004 Session Law. If you recall, that 2004 Session Law requires them to reach out to adjoining property owners for non-conforming lots. This was not, this was a conforming lot, so the explanation we received is they did not notify the adjoining property owners of it and proceeded under 168-269.
Under that, I was a little confused with that non-conforming and conforming. I read that a while back. And it wasn't, I wish I had it in front of me. The language was kind of sort of tricky on that to whether you, whether you still didn't have to contact them for non-conforming. And I kind of sort of, that seems a little tricky to me that, you know what I mean? Because it's not stated clearly. So now you're saying that you could have property owners, if they wanted to, come back with a lawsuit and possibly win it because that, that, that law is not stated clearly, you know? And so it's a gray area there that we're playing a dangerous game with that kind of sort of needs to be clarified, and, and, you know?
So the Session Law, I looked it up. It's two, the Session Law 2004-92, and it's a local law that only applies to the City of Goldsboro. And it starts notwithstanding the provisions of Article 12, Chapter 168 of the General Statutes, the following procedures may be utilized by the City of Goldsboro. And in that, it talks about your non-conforming lots, that those can be sold for a dollar. And then later on in that Session Law, it does state that for conforming lots, that they are, there's certain procedures that they're supposed to go through to notify adjoining property owners and things like that. So I think the question would be whether or not, can they pick to proceed under the Session Law or can they pick to proceed under the General Statute?
Yes. So it's, it's just, it's just, I don't, I don't really like it personally, you know what I'm saying? Because, you know, at any time, they could pick whatever they want to pick almost, you know what I'm saying? I mean, so it's just.
Didn't you just say that, and which, which law is it that they can, that they contact adjoining?
That's under Session Law 2004-94.
So, but they didn't have to go by that because it's a conforming law?
Correct.
I would, I would see, I would think that you would, I'm not saying offer it to them for a dollar, but offer it to the adjoining landowners first. I mean, before you, at least they make them aware that it's being sold. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, we didn't solicit the offer.
I understand. I'm not saying you, I'm just saying that's just a courtesy, I would think, to the.
But that's the background, I mean, that's the explanation I got. And certainly, I think there's some gray area there, whether or not they're proceeding under their local law or they're proceeding under General Statute.
Is their house is on either side of it?
I do not know. Is there a GIS map on there that just?
It seems like that would be the neighborly thing to do.
I don't think, I don't think that there is. But I believe those lots are vacant.
Uh-huh. Okay.
You, half of us, well, divided interest, you, the Board of Commissioners, could say that you're not going to sell, period, unless they've notified the adjoining property owners.
Oh, you got a problem there.
I don't have a problem. I mean, I just thought a courtesy, they need to know it.
Do you put signs out in front of lots when they're up for bid or anything, Andrew?
They're, under the Session Law, there's some requirements that they actually have to physically post them.
But they didn't follow the Session Law.
Correct, correct. They followed the law that we usually proceed under, which is the upset bid. But as a practice, we've started notifying. We send letters to adjoining property owners, letting them know when it's going to, when the offer is going to be considered by the board and also when the upset period would run. So we do that just as, we're not required to, but we do that as.
Well, since this is under consent, are we allowed to go ahead and remove from consent and send it back to the city with those conditions?
Yes.
Do we have consensus and agreement that we send this back?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead and put something in your minutes that you adopted that that's your, that's the rule.
So we would want to just take it off consent and put it under new business. Is that right?
But at the same time, don't we need to convey to them that that's, we kind of want this from now on?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
All right, so we're removing item two from consent and moving that to item eight
All righty. Number three is a motion to approve proposed changes to the Wayne County Animal Control Ordinance as requested by the Animal Control Advisory Board. Graham and Andrea have worked on this. Andrew's asked for some help.
Just if needed. So there's a couple of things I've been working with Animal Control and Graham has as well with their board on three recommended changes to our Animal Control Ordinance. And I'll just, I did a summary in the memo that I put together. So the first one is for a definition for adequate shade for animals. So there's been some concerns amongst citizens, and I think they've gone to the advisory board as well, that we don't currently in our ordinance have anything that defines adequate shade. So we define adequate shelter. And there's a, in my opinion, I think that there is some accommodations in there, and there's an interpretation for shade in there. But there are some concerns that we don't define shade. So we, given that it's, you know, extremely hot during the summers and animals may be out, we, they wanted to be some accommodations in our ordinance for that. So Graham and I researched a little bit, and we looked at surrounding counties and how they address it. And how they address it is they actually enumerate a definition for adequate shade in their ordinance. So the language, the proposed language that's right here, we would add this definition. And this is almost verbatim from what some surrounding counties have done. Johnston has a similar approach, I believe Wilson does as well. But we would add a definition for adequate shade, and it states, "One or more outside areas of shade, large enough to contain at one time all pets present and to protect them from the direct rays of the sun. A doghouse as defined by adequate shelter shall not constitute adequate shade." And just some background on that, there, there was some concern that if, for example, you know, those igloos, those doghouses, those get incredibly hot. So we don't want somebody just to put that in 100-degree weather and think that that's going to be adequate shade. There were different variations of this that went to the board, to the advisory board. Some concerns we had were that those proposals did not define what shade was. There were some versions that said it's a tarp, it's, you know, one thing or another. And we thought that'd be problematic because a lot of times, people just have a lot of natural shade in their backyard. So certainly that's, that would be, that would be adequate to protect the dog from the shade. So I think the Animal Control Board was satisfied with this. They passed that several, two weeks ago? Was that what it was?
A month ago.
A month ago. At their last, it was at their last meeting. So that passed, and I believe the citizens who had reached out were satisfied with this approach.
So, so, explain it in lamest terms, what is, what is actually shade? Because if you go back, go back down on the, on the slide, please. Go back to the top. Oh, let's see, back up just a little bit. Right here, we're adequate shelter. It says, it's consistent of at least three solid walls, a roof and floor, suitable for bedding. So tell me what that, three solid walls, essentially a chain link kennel is not sufficient. Is that correct?
That would be as far as the actual, that, no, sorry, it has to be completely closed for actual doghouse type setup, but it don't have to be a doghouse. It could be anything as far as, I mean, like a handbill with plywood, anything that just, the only thing that is open is the entrance part so that they can get.
But that could be, I would think that would get mighty hot as well because you don't have air.
And that was the concern, that we address shelter. So we actually say you actually have to have a shelter up, but we don't say that you have to have anything covered that would protect them from, from the sunlight. So that, that was the reason why they, they wanted the change.
So, so you need a roof and three, and at least three walls?
Yes, and a floor, yes, sir.
Or, or some sort of, not necessarily roof, just some sort of covering.
Right, well, whatever, tarp or tree or whatever.
Something on that.
But, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of chain link kennels in our county.
Yes.
So, I mean, are we, are we saying that we're looking to pass something that is going to affect 75% of the people or, I mean, what?
Well, the, the definition says, "A structure that, that shall protect the animal from the elements." So, I mean, I, I read that to mean if it's 60 degrees outside and it's, there's lots of clouds and the dog just wants to lay outside in its fence, there's no problem with that. But, I mean, if you get down to about 20-something degrees and then you throw a dog or an animal or anybody, or any animal out there, that's going to be a problem. Because at that point, it's not protecting them from the elements.
I understand that, that's.
So that was the first change. Are there any more questions on that one? And the second one, this is the redemption. Do you want to explain that one?
We are currently holding animals in our shelter that come in as a stray for 120 hours, which is five days. I'm asking that we can reduce the 120 hours to 72 hours for two different main reasons. The state of North Carolina only requires us to hold animals 72 hours, but with our county ordinance, it's 120, mainly for the animals that I know we cannot help. They are truly feral, it is not them just being fearful. For a feral dog, especially cat, that animal is scared, petrified for five whole days. They are scared to death. I'm knowing after they've been scanned for a chip, knowing that I cannot place them in a safe future environment or permanent place then where they can be safe. I'm requesting to shorten that so that we can not have to hold that animal so long knowing I can't help them and they have to be there five days. Also, that will help me house more animals that I do know that we can help for a great future so that they can have more space just to help it on both those avenues.
And your board approved that recommendation?
Yes, sir, they did.
They did?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions on that?
And then the last change is one that's actually, Graham brought to my attention not too long ago. It's actually a requirement of General Statutes. So under General Statute 67-4.1, the Animal Control Officer can deem a dog dangerous for various region, reasons, and that's defined right there. You can see it in front of you. And when an Animal Control Officer does that, the, the owner can appeal that, but there has, the Board of Commissioners has to designate who hears that appeal. Currently in our ordinance, we authorize the Animal Control Director to deem a dog dangerous, but we have not designated a board for the appeal. What the proposed change would do would be to make the Animal Control Advisory Board the board that hears that appeal. So under those circumstances, if your Animal Control Director deemed a dog dangerous, then we would provide notice as required by statute to the owner. If the owner disagreed with that, they would go to the Animal Control Board, who would hear that and make a final decision on it. If at that point, they still disagreed with it, then they could proceed with litigation in Superior Court if that's what they chose to do. So this is just to bring us in compliance with General Statutes. And this has also been approved by the.
We don't have to appoint another board. You're just going to use the board that you, the existing board.
We're going to use the board that's in place.
Thank you, Senator. Okay, any questions on that?
I still got a question on the shelter deal. It's like, and I may be looking at it wrong, but it looks like it's in conflict of the first paragraph in the, of the first, when you get to the ordinance, it's like where it says about the three-wall deal.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and I'm just, just like from years in the past, like when we had foxhounds and deerhounds and stuff like that, I mean, 20-some dogs. Yeah, they had a concrete floor. We had a roof, you know, where we built the, the pin, but it was all chain link fence from there on out, except for the doghouse, which was in the back. But it's not solid walls, it's chain link. I'm just trying to get in my mind what's, I mean, tell me, tell me exactly, you know, because I'm sure I'm going to get some phone calls on this.
That's, that's okay to have. This is only for what they are basically considering their protection as far as a doghouse, even if it's handbill, even if it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, if it's a barrel, it is okay.
So it's the doghouse is what you're talking about?
We are only worried about the doghouse, keep it out of the wind, the rain.
Well, I was looking, it says structure. Um, okay, out of my.
Yes, sir. Anybody in a 10-by-10 pin or vinyl fence or wooden fence, I'm leaving them alone.
Right.
This is only to protect that animal from the elements as much as we can as far as what they consider their doghouse.
Okay, I understand because there's a lot of them that got the barrels or the igloos or whatever.
Yes, and I.
But they've got a shelter, whether it be a tarp, whether it be, you know, a pecan tree, or whether it be a, you know, a tin roof.
Yes, sir.
But they have got chain link, there's many chain link fences, you know?
Yes, sir. That is completely okay to have. We're just trying to make sure they have shade.
Just disclaimer, I'm out, I'm out in the foxhound business, so I'm not asking for me, I'm just saying.
Right, yes, sir. I understand.
That's what we used to do, and I just wanted to make sure that.
Yes, sir. Consider everybody, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on it?
These changes do not need a public hearing, so as long as it's, it's on the consent agenda today, so assuming that it remains on there and it's a unanimous vote, then all of them would be passed today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Crumpler.
Mr. Chairman, I think it was ironic. I rode up in the elevator today with Graham, and there was a lady with a little dog about that big.
Look, when I was in Concord, I got on the elevator, the elevator door opened, and there was these two huge, I'm talking about huge bulldogs that got on the, on the elevator with me. And I said, whoa.
Well, you're still here.
Service dog.
Number four is a motion to approve change order number one for the apron pavement rehab project at the airport and the appropriate budget amendment. And I think number one would be necessary because of the anticipated undercut and backfield quantity was overrun and it costs more to do that. So these changes are necessary on this particular project. And there's changes to the section of the apron pavement in front of the fuel farm and in front of the UNC's help, uh, yeah, help helicopter hangar from asphalt to concrete. Number five is motion to approve Amendment Four to W.K. Dixon's Work Authorization, number one. And that is due to add construction of a taxi lane adjacent to the apron that serve GWW's sunshade hangars.
That now has been approved by.
That has been approved. I did see the email on that. And then the last one, let me get this back. Is work authorization for an appropriate budget amendment. And this is for applying for pre-project planning for the replacement of the executive jetport pump station. Those funds will be applied, they'll be applying for grant funds to do this with. And this is an eligible expense, so maybe they'll get approved this time.
The drainage in the parking lot is way around.
Well, they also are asking for that, but, in other words, he is.
I got pictures of yesterday. It's terrible.
What's the total cost of the change orders?
Actually, there's not, this is not a change order. This is actually authorizing him to go ahead and draw up plans.
Oh, yeah, but talk about.
For the drainage as well as for the replacement of the pump station.
He's talking prior to. I'm talking about prior to number four.
Oh, number four.
Because he went through, rolled them basically together, so.
Do you have that number, Allison?
Um, I don't. I was just sitting here looking at my email.
I saw a sheet or. Just a moment, maybe. First one is $74,531.50. That was number one. Let's see, second one. Second one was $40,649. And to the last one. And, see the last one here? Anticipated $20,000 on the last one.
And these funds are coming from where?
Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation.
So it's really not?
Ah, there's a logical match.
10%.
The art funds, I think, can cover the grant applications, the county art funds, and then the remainder would come from probably existing fund balance that the county has in the jetport.
But the federal government...
They cover like 90% of it.
It's like 100, they get like $150,000 back, don't they?
Well, they, that's their NPE funds, and they are applying to use those for, it's, it's one of these projects they're going to apply to use.
As far as like the, the service of the engineer stuff, so that's where we get that back. Should they get it back?
And then item number seven is a motion to approve canceling the September 6, 2022 board of commissioners meeting.
Which is the day after Labor Day. Okay.
And then on to the new business. Item number one is a motion to accept the tax collector settlement for calendar year 2021 taxes and prior years. Number two is a motion to approve the order directing the tax collector to collect the taxes charged in the tax records and receipts for calendar year 2022 and all prior years outstanding. Number three is a motion to appoint Alan Lumpkin as the tax administrator for four years.
He can work a little bit longer.
Alan is here, if you have any questions, those are under new business.
Do we normally give you one year or four years? Four, four at a time, huh?
Four at a time. And number four is a motion to approve the new five-year contract with Axon as recommended by IT Director Ryan Preble and Sheriff Larry Pierce. Number five is the diversity policy working group. Item number six will discuss our legislative goals for the upcoming year. Number seven will update on the state of emergency remote meeting changes. And item number eight is the, was formerly number two, the sale of surplus property at 1,005 Ivy Street, that'll now be moved as number eight under new business. And that's all we have, sir.
Okay. All right, we are going to have a closed session?
Yes, sir.
We'll have the county managers report, and board of commissioners committee reports and comments, closed session, and then adjournments. And do we need to go into closed session at this time?
Can.
Can, okay, for the purpose of...
One is to discuss the acquisition of rail property, and also to consider the qualifications and performance of an initial employment for public officers or employees.
All right, do I have a motion, we go into closed session?
So, oh.
I suppose Josh, so he is saying that the two issues are obviously moving the road closer, if DOT comes back and says can't do it.
I can't do it?
Yeah, they're, they're, right now, the last word we got from them was they're classifying it as a road, not a driveway, that's the sticking point, so if...
Since when was that, what day was, when did he get that back?
I just talked to him just now.
No, when did he get that back?
That was the last word he got before he talked to you guys the other day.
Okay.
That was the last, so he hasn't got enough days while I'm getting that, and he's waiting to hear back. So that's the last. The other issue was on the cutout minor issue with, so the one that runs to the Gambello Building, and then one that we're going to use for future use, those will have to be separated a little bit more, so I don't know how that affects what you guys want to do, but he just wanted to let you know, it doesn't keep us from having it, but they just need to be separated a little bit more.
Is it coming here anytime soon?
No, we don't have any plans out of here.
Okay. If I could show you, we just go out there and put on the ground and throw it out?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's it, I just wanted to let you know, so I don't know how that affects your decision today.
And you're reaching out to DOT?
I've already, supposedly that's already handled, but I'll...
Verify.
Yeah, and I'll be with him.
He's basically...
I'll be with him Thursday, so...
He's just basically saying, I gotta go, and what day give me, if I'm like, I can't...
It'll come down to whether they determine whether that entrance is a street or a driveway, because it's treated differently.
Well, in my understanding is that in that we have a divider on our driveway, they are interpreting that as being a street, because it's...
That's part of it, right?
So it may, it may be a compromise that we have to eliminate the divider. You know, we wanted a kind of a boulevarded effect.
Right, yeah.
And that's why they're, but you're, but you're...
I'll be with him Thursday.
Okay, all right.
So, from him, he's saying, your decision today doesn't affect moving forward, in other words, the cutouts move left or right down the street a little bit, that doesn't change it, and then if DOT comes back, either way, it doesn't change what they're doing.
Whatever DOT determines is what it's got to be.
Right, so...
So it's not change order, it's not change...
No, it would just be whether it's here or there, or where the cutouts are, so he just wanted me to pass that on.
Okay, good enough. Okay, need a motion, go into closed session.
Sir, move.
All right, we got a motion going to closed session, any discussion, not all those in favor, sign the file, I'll raise your right hand. Okay, we're going into closed session.